Okay. Moving on, we are now at item 4B1, the Crestwood Flu Text Amendment. And you have the floor, Mr. Fisher.
All right, welcome back from lunch, everyone. So, item 4B1, the Crestwood PUD was administratively postponed to the May 3th Board of County Commissioners Transmittal Hearing.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. And we are now on 4B, item 4B2, that's the Logan Ranch Residential Flu Transmittal.
And we will begin with a presentation by the applicant, and then Jerry Lodge with the Planning Division will give staff's presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I do appreciate the opportunity to be able to present the Logan Ranch project to you this afternoon. The request that we have before you is a land use change to go from AGR to EH, which stands for Essential Housing. This is actually the first Essential Housing project to be presented to the board. The subject property is located on the south side of Boynton Beach Boulevard, just west of the Florida Turnpike. It's actually at the southeast corner of Acme Dairy Road and Boynton Beach Boulevard. It's 39 acres in size and is located directly across the street from Sunset Palms Elementary School and the future Sunset Palms Middle School. We also have the Canyon District Park just south of the school site, and I know some of you were at the ribbon cutting late last fall. To the south of the subject property, you can see residential, and then to the east is agriculture. That property will be coming before you in a couple of months for a land use change. Before I get into the details of the project, since this is the first Essential Housing project to be approved, I'm just going to go through the requirements and how this site is consistent with the policies that this board recently adopted. As far as the policies and procedures, the Essential Housing allows a density of eight units per acre, and we are proposing eight units per acre. Another one of the policies requires a concurrent zoning application be processed with the land use change. Our office submitted a land use change application as well as a zoning application on November 16th. So when, if the board transmits the land use change, the zoning application and land use would be adopted at the same hearing. Some additional criteria for Essential Housing require that sites must be a minimum of 30 acres. The subject's property is 39 acres. The criteria also requires that the 60-40 requirement be adhered to, that the development area be clustered on 40% of the site. In addition, the language allows for the preservation area to be onsite or offsite. Our office worked closely with the residents in this general area, as well as Cobra, and it was a consensus of the residents that they would like our preservation area to be contiguous and part of the overall project development. Many of the PUDs that are developed in the ag reserve, the preservation areas are located somewhere offsite, and so this is unique in that the preservation area and development area are both on the same parcel. The criteria for being able to request Essential Housing was identified as having frontage on Boynton Beach Boulevard between the Florida Turnpike and a half mile west of Lyons Road, and Atlantic Avenue from the Florida Turnpike to a half a mile west of Lyons Road. If an applicant requests Essential Housing, we're required 25% workforce. So this project will be providing 25% workforce housing units, and those are to be built Because this project is proposing more than 200 units, we're required to have staggered roof heights, so ultimately, we would be proposing two and four-story buildings, and the site plan will be coming before you with the zoning application. Again, we have 60% onsite preservation. This is a map that was included in the staff report for the Essential Housing language. You can see in blue, staff identified three parcels as potential sites for Essential Housing. Of those three sites, the subject property that's before you, Logan Ranch, is the only one along Boynton Beach Boulevard that's coming in and requesting the Essential Housing Then, as you look at the details of the property, you know, it is 39 acres in size, so what that means is we'll have about 23 acres in preservation and about 15 and a half acres for the development area. It's a density of eight units to the acre, so that will be 314 multifamily units, and of those units, 235 units will be market rate, and 79 units will be assigned to workforce housing, again, constructed onsite. Just in conclusion, we are consistent with the Essential Housing land use language. We've worked with staff over the last year and the board. As the Essential Housing language has been developed, we meet all the criteria for Essential Housing. In addition, we also meet the agricultural tier policies for housing. This housing will be, there are people working in the ag reserve, and this will be an alternative option for housing to those people that are working in the businesses, the hospitals, the schools that currently exist in the ag reserve. Essential Housing is compatible with the surrounding land uses. We are in the Cobra area, and we've met with Cobra, and we do have Cobra support for the land use change. We'll continue to work with Cobra on the site plan and the zoning application, and we have all the, meet all the public facilities and service impacts. This is the Cobra letter indicating that they approved the Essential Housing land use designation for Logan, but there's still a lot of work to do on our site plan, and we'll continue to work with them on that. Just in conclusion, Essential Housing is appropriate for the property. It's been identified for almost the past year as part of the Essential Housing Comprehensive Plan Language. It's adjacent to a middle elementary school, charter school. There's jobs in the area, there's Baptist Hospital, the county park, Canyon Town Center. We have the support from Cobra. We've actually been working with some of the residents in the direct vicinity. They formed a group called BARC. BARC also supports the land use change. Again, we'll continue to work with BARC on the site plan. There's some traffic issues for Acme Dairy, but that's all site plan and zoning related. We've committed to BARC and Cobra to continue our outreach efforts. Staff is recommending approval. Planning Commission unanimously supported the project. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none, staff presentation, please.
Good morning. Jerry Lodge with the Planning Division. Before I begin with staff's presentation, similar to what Jennifer just did, I wanted to give you a very brief overview of the recently adopted Essential Housing Future Land Use Designation. So, since the recommendations of the master plan were incorporated into the Comprehensive Plan and related agricultural reserve tier policies, residential development in the tier was limited to one unit per five acres. However, one unit per acre is available in some planned development options. There is the 80-20 PUD and the 60-40 PUD, which both have strict guidelines in regards to minimum acreage and preserve requirements, in addition to other criteria. In addition to that, each marketplace allows multifamily unit types, and were previously approved for one unit per acre. However, these have not been built and do not have any requirement to provide workforce housing units. Residential development in the tier has been primarily accomplished through 60-40 AGR PUDs consisting of single-family homes, and which has created a development pattern with little housing diversity. The Essential Housing Flu was adopted in August and was a result of multiple text and land use amendment requests seeking high-density residential development with workforce housing components in the tier. The text amendment established the Essential Housing Future Land Use Designation and created policies for high-density residential requests in the tier and allows up to eight units per acre, which is calculated based on the site's total acreage and also includes a significant workforce housing component. New policy 151J provides specific guidance for the development of Essential Housing projects in ag reserve tier. This includes requiring a minimum of 30 acres, a 60% preserve area, of which 10% can be stormwater area, as long as it includes enhanced environmental features, a minimum of 25% of all units to be provided as workforce housing units. If the project exceeds 200 units, it's required to have various building heights and specific location criteria, which limits the development of EH flu properties to those with frontage on Atlantic Avenue or Boynton Beach Boulevard, and are located between the Florida Turnpike and a half mile west of Lyons Road. So, this map was pulled from the Essential Housing presentation that was given to the board upon consideration of the future land use, and it illustrates properties along Atlantic Avenue that are eligible to request the Essential Housing Future Land Use, which is based on the adopted locational and minimum acreage criteria. As you can see, the highlighted properties have frontage on Atlantic Avenue and are located between Florida Turnpike and the half mile west of Lyons Road. This is the same map that Jennifer showed, and it just shows the properties that were identified as being eligible to request Essential Housing along Boynton Beach Boulevard. So, the one before you today is Logan, which is the southwestern property right there. And, oh yeah, these also are located between a half mile west of Lyons Road and the Florida Turnpike. So, the locational criteria for the Central Housing Flu was based on board direction to focus higher densities or multifamily development on major corridors and in proximity to commercial nodes. All right, and now on to the site-specific amendment before you today, Logan Ranch Residential. So, the subject site is just under 40 acres and located on the southeast corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. The applicant's requesting to amend the future land use from AGR to Essential Housing with an underlying AGR. The concurrent zoning application is requesting to rezone the site from AGR to MUPD in order to develop 314 multifamily units, equating to a gross density of eight units per acre. I would also like to point out that this is a First Amendment request for the Central Housing Future Land Use. All right, so here's the subject site shown in the red outline. The site is primarily surrounded by AGR Future Land Use Designations. Existing commercial uses are located west of the site, including Canyon Town Center and Cobblestone Plaza. And immediately west of the site is an elementary school and middle school under construction and the Canyon District Park, which recently opened. East of the site is the urban suburban tier in the Florida Turnpike. And directly north and east of the site are two proposed future land use amendments in process, including B.C. Commerce Center, which is next on today's agenda, and Erickson Senior Living, which is proposing the congregate living residential land use. All right, so this site was previously subjected to privately proposed text amendment initiation requests in 2020 and 2021 to allow a mixed-use center on the site with eight units per acre, almost 262,000 square feet of commercial uses, reduce preserve requirements, and introduced new preserve uses. Staff recommended denial as a request for major departures from ag reserve policy concept at the time, and the Planning Commission also recommended denial. The board denied the initiation of both of these requests. Staff's assessment is that the amendment is consistent with the Central Housing Flu as it meets the criteria established by the board, including the locational and acreage criteria, and is proposing a 60% preserve area located onsite. In addition, the proposed amendment introduces a higher density development in the tier with a 25% workforce housing requirement, further in counting directions, and assists with the lack of housing diversity in the tier. In regards to compatibility, the site is located in close proximity to schools, several schools, large district park, and places of employment, and is compatible with those uses. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions as proposed by staff. The motion before you today is to transmit. The proposed conditions include a cap of a maximum 314 units to require a 25% workforce housing onsite, and a concurrent adoption hearing for the future land use amendment and associated zoning application. Conditions 2 and 3 are proposed by staff as their policy requirements of the Central Housing Future Land Use, and full text of proposed conditions are always in Exhibit 1. Okay, so we have received a couple items of correspondence since the publication of the staff report, and it should be included in your add delete that was provided to you. And that concludes the presentation, so we'll be happy to take some questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several public comment cards. First, I'd like to say that we have three non-speaking cards, all in support. And then, comment cards, I have who would like to speak, Barbara Roth, Brett Jelsimino, Drew Martin, Gail Ladd, and several others.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing me again. Barbara Roth, representing Cobra 6776 Rienzo Lake Worth. This area is near and dear to Cobra. It is the section known as the ag reserve within Cobra, and we're very proud of the development that Cobra has helped to see in this area. We were at that ribbon cutting also. We were delighted to be there for the new school, for the park. There's the existing school. There will be a library. And again, thank you, Vice Mayor. We're honored that our former president's name, Myrna Rossoff, will be on the meeting room in that library. Thank you all. We are in support of Essential Housing on this site. I don't want that to be misconstrued. As we go forward, however, our concern is and will be with the density and the traffic that results in that. The other issue, and we do hear that a variety of heights in the buildings required, and we certainly support that, however, nowhere in Cobra is there a four-story building. And that is something, even when you, just at your last meeting last week, approved Villages of Windsor, you had already removed the fourth story there, and that was not even in the ag reserve. This is the ag reserve, and going forward with zoning and detailed plans, we ask that you consider no fourth story. We're very concerned about the traffic because of Acme Dairy Road. One of our member communities is a canyon's community, Canyon Trails. They are on the east side of Acme Dairy Road. They have only one entrance egress on Acme Dairy Road. This is going to be a whole lot of additional traffic until such time as Acme Dairy Road, and there's a little circle there, an old circle. I believe that must be addressed for safety. We've heard discussions of that in other areas of the county today. In addition, Joe Abruzzo Drive or Way, I'm not quite sure what it's called, Joe Abruzzo Way, on the south side, doesn't even have sidewalk yet, and we've got the parks there. You want children coming and going, and that is being used as a reliever road. People coming up Lyons, make that right turn, go across Joe Abruzzo, and then come up Acme Dairy, just so they can avoid the intersection at Lyons and Boynton Beach Boulevard. So, if any of you have not had the pleasure of driving that, when you get done up in North County, please come down to Lyons and Boynton Beach Boulevard because
Thank you very much.
it's a challenge. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Brett Jelsimino. I am the applicant and developer for this project, and I am honored to be here today and excited to have gotten here with you all and with staff and the army of constituents that have cooperated and worked together in part to establish policy to help address a growing civic need here in my hometown, Palm Beach County. We've become the headline of affordability crisis of sorts, where the gap between wages and a simple item which should not be a luxury, housing, has widened. I attended the workshop yesterday talking about the policymaking for additional accommodations for workforce housing, and I am delighted to see the progress and the advancement and the consideration for same. I'm here to help complete the ag reserve and deliver housing in an area that always contemplated. It had always contemplated the variety of housing ranging from single-family to multifamily, and for whatever reason, the multifamily seems to have been left behind. And what we're here to do is to help complete that and provide housing for everyone. I'd like to dispel the idea that we're here to decimate the ag reserve in any way or part. Right now, this land is not in preservation. After this development, we will have contributed 60% of it, so for every acre we build on, an acre and a half goes into conservation, and I don't think that that's appreciated enough by a lot. It's a very significant undertaking to be able to do that, and we're excited to think creatively and work with the policymakers, the neighbors, and the community to figure out a way to activate this land that's presently just dormant farmland. Find a way that neighbors and the public can access it, enjoy it, appreciate the green space, whether it's a park, a passive park, a wetland, what have you, but here to be good members of the community and contribute and not take away.
Thank you, sir. You're recognized. Mr. Martin.
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Sierra Club. Good afternoon. Happy to see you all again. We do support some of the things here. We support preserve requirement of 60%. We're happy to see it included. We support the Essential Housing, but we do not support the project. And I really hate to hear the word dormant farmland, as if farmland is unproductive, you know, fallow farmland is how, and if you go back and read the Bible, and this may be a little off-topic, Mayor, so I apologize, but I think it's historic reference. The Bible did refer to fallow land, and it was encouraged. So, for those of you who are Bible readers, I hope you will take notice. I'm assuming that my time is not up.
Your time's not up.
I am spending a lot of time reading about the Colorado River, and the reason I'm reading about that is because a lot of our winter vegetables are grown either here in Palm Beach County or in Arizona and California, and they are running out of water, which we have. So, I think this is going to become much more valuable farmland. It's a shame that we're going to lose it because, and I don't expect to win you over today, but I want to just emphasize this so you're thinking about it. You know, eating is an important part of life, and, you know, a lot of us are eating more and more vegetables, and that's important. And I think that if we give up all this land, and again, this is not some sort of useless vacant land. This is land that could be in agriculture, but it's not in agriculture right now. That doesn't mean it couldn't be. And so, what we're asking is that you just think about how we're losing this land and how it's going to affect people. Now, I had the opportunity to meet with Vice Mayor Sacks, and she mentioned some interesting ideas, and one was to raise chickens. Now, I know the price of eggs is going up. You can raise chickens, and at the same time, they actually fertilize the land, and it's quite productive, which save the landowner money on fertilizer. And I know that someone told me, "Well, vendors is having trouble making money because of buying seeds." Well, there's such a thing as saving seeds, so you don't have to buy them. And so, there's a lot of things that could be done that could make this productive farmland, and so I just hope you'll think about that as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, I had one other comment card from Gail Ladd, who did not wish to speak, but she is opposed, and she is a Jupiter resident. Robby Durville and Melissa McEwen. Did I pronounce that right?
No. Hi, it's Robby Durrell. It's an impossible French spelling and bad handwriting, probably. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I happen to be working on the new school construction across the street from this project, and I'm speaking with the principal. He has a real hard time hiring teachers because of the cost of housing. This would be a great opportunity for 124 new teachers to have the chance of living across the street from the school, shopping at Publix. Publix employees could live there, send their kids to the school. There's already a stoplight to cross the street at the elementary school. The middle school has already got permits for two new turning lanes, so the traffic is alleviated, and I'm sure the traffic engineers will further make sure it's proper. I'm in favor of this project. Please vote to transmit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa McEwen, 1270 Southeast, 14th Court, Deerfield. I'm here today to support the long-term landowners of the ag reserve. I met the gentleman before me, his mom, Ms. Barbara Durrell, back in 2015, and Ms. Logan back in 2015, and, you know, we worked together with the commission at that time to find solutions for these property owners. As you heard from staff, they've been through a number of applications that haven't stuck, and I'm grateful for the family that they finally found a solution that's accepted, and it's compatible, and it's near parks and schools, and it's providing Essential Housing, actually providing over 300 homes on only 15 acres. And that's kind of unheard of in the ag reserve. I don't know how many acres the other homes take up, but it's a whole lot more than that. So, grateful to see a diversity of housing out there and for the support this application has, and we ask for your support today, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Okay, that's it. It's back to the board. Is there any further comments, discussion? Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my district. I've been out there numerous times on the site, and I wonder if I could have probably just so be known, Brett, if you want to come on up, I know you're right next to Jennifer, so, but I want to ask you, since you're the developer. I think this is a good plan, and I'd like to ask you what you are thinking about the four-story and the three-story issue that came up with Cobra when they reviewed it.
Sure. So, as laid out, we are offering a variety of housing ranging from two-story townhomes and then four-story elevated garden-style apartment communities. And the thought is this, that to provide the two types of housing or two different sizes of buildings, which is a requirement of the Essential Housing, you know, four-story and two-story, the average is three-story. If I could do all three-story, I would. I don't think the current policy allows that, and I also see added benefit in offering a diversity of housing. This is a very nice and affluent community with families. I don't, versus like a urban setting, which might be a little bit more young professional or student housing type, right? So, the two-story townhomes accommodate, you know, somebody that wants more space, an attached garage, a little bit more rim, even a fenced-in backyard in a rental product. But to offset that, to maintain the same density on a finite amount of acreage, I need a little bit more density. And the added amenity and benefit of that is offering the elevated product, which could appeal to folks that don't want to carry their groceries up three flights or four flights of stairs day in and day out. It can accommodate, you know, less mobile, more elderly renters who are being priced out of home buying, and in fact, might just want to rent as a lifestyle choice and shed the responsibilities of homeownership. So, it's an average. It's a game of averages. The, architecturally, the massing idea of the two-story and the four-story was that we have configured thoughtfully, I think, the two-story buildings to flank Acme Dairy Road and to help conceal visually the presence of the four-story buildings. The four-story buildings are as far away from the neighboring communities and the Acme Dairy corridor as we can get them, so that when you drive by, you see a two-story building mass and not a four-story, you know, casting a shadow on Acme Dairy. But it's really the arrangement of, you know, the two different product types and the desire to offer a diversity of buildings to our prospective residents.
Right. So, if I, may I continue, Mayor? So, you'll have, so you're welcoming residents of diverse ages and capabilities, right?
There will be no
seniors, young, and Seniors, young, and professional. So will you have a daycare center there somewhere in that community to accommodate those young mothers and dads who work and need, only available to the residents, not a commercial daycare? Would you seriously consider that?
I would. It's presently not contemplated within the program. I don't know if the zoning would allow it or not.
I'm not talking about a commercial.
Okay.
To the public, but something, you're going to have like a little clubhouse or
That's right.
A group, right. That's usually a very good location site for, usually you have a gym, and next to the gym, you'll have a daycare center. I've seen it many other places. And this will help the young families to be able to have their children right there in the center with them, and it will cut back on traffic. Is that something that beyond the record, Brett, that we can, we can count on there in the, in the center?
That's a very interesting amenity. I like that idea. So absolutely, I'll explore that.
You can finish your sentence. You'll sort of look into it?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good. How about another thing I know that a lot of young families like is, do you have any outdoor basketball courts or anything that would, you're going to have a lot of young kids there, especially families, because you have a school right across the street? Would it be possible to review the site plan to look at an outdoor basketball court?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Just to reiterate this, we'll get the site, if this moves forward, then it is going to be, if we follow, well, we'll call it the essential housing requirement, will require that they bring back a site plan, so we can either approve or deny it at that time.
Just like to see those hoops before it comes back to us.
Well, it.
It will, I know, it will. Thank you, Mayor.
One of the other ideas that we have considered, provided our proximity to the brand-new and state-of-the-art Canyon District Park, is sort of mirroring off of that. And if there are active uses or uses that the county would like or could use or needs more of, to consider incorporating that into the Preserve Park aspect of our passive area, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bernard, you recognize?
Thank you very much. Jennifer, if you can come forward just real quick. I know that Vice Mayor Sacks had asked some questions in regard to some of the amenities. Wouldn't some of the other, I know that Mr. Channing's product is, they're going to do other things. Is that, is that close to this project?
Yes, Commissioner. So we also have a preserve that's over 20 acres in size. And we're proposing, right now, we're working with the residents to develop a walking trail system and actually connect up with the active park on the other side of the street. So we are programming our preserve area, and our program is really focused not just on our residents, but what we can do for the greater community. So, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? Bring it back to the board then for a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, if I may, Mayor. I'd like to move that we transmit the Logan Ranch Residential Amendment at this time.
So, and that is, is that with the proposed conditions as well?
I'm sure, yes, with the proposed conditions.
Okay, just clarifying. Okay, so we have a motion to.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Motion to approve with the proposed conditions included, and that's by Vice Mayor Sacks, and it will be seconded by Commissioner Moreno. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, everybody, very much. All right, moving on. We are now on item 4B3, and this is the transmittal hearing for the B.C. Commerce Center. And with the applicant, or would the applicant make their presentation, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Jennifer Morton with Jane Morton, Planning and Landscape Architecture, representing B.C. Commerce. The client is going to call this project "The District", so you're going to, that's going to be the name for the project. This site is, we are, again.
Jennifer, is it named after District 5?
No, no, nothing to do with this.
That's right.
Not a bad name, though.
So, anyway, so we're asking for a land use change to go from AGR to Commerce. Commerce is another one of the new land use designations that have been established for the Ag Reserve. You have reviewed a couple of other sites that have requested Commerce, and you've transmitted those. So the subject site is located on the north side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. It's right off of the Florida Turnpike. We're bound on the east by the Florida Turnpike, on the west by Acme Dairy, and on the south by Boynton Beach Boulevard. It's 47 acres in size. If you look at the land use that surrounds the Commerce request, we're surrounded by AGR land use, and then we have a little bit of commercial on the west side of the property. It's at, the commercial is at the northwest corner of Acme Dairy and Boynton Beach Boulevard. We meet all of the policy requirements for the Commerce request. We have the required frontage and access on Boynton Beach Boulevard. We are processing a concurrent zoning application. We meet the acreage requirement, which is between three acres and 50 acres. We're at 47. And we also meet the requirement for preservation. Any Commerce requests over 16 acres are required to have onsite preservation for that portion of the property greater than 16 acres. We are consistent with the comprehensive plan. We meet all of the criteria that the BCC established for Commerce. We're also consistent with the Ag Reserve policies. We're developing a light industrial area for the residences, the businesses, the hospitals, the schools, all those needed services that are being provided for project, with projects like this. The master plan actually recommended industrial at this node when it was originally approved. The Commerce is compatible with the adjacent nursery and commercial uses, as well as the AGR. We did meet with Cobra and with Bark. We have a letter of support from Bark, and I know Cobra is going to speak on this item. We do have support for the land use change. And like my other item, we'll continue to work on the site plan with Cobra and Bark. As far as the uses that we're proposing, the hearing last week where the, we were, where the board added in the brewery and some of those other text amendments to the zoning language was very helpful, and we appreciate that. This is the letter of support from Bark, saying that they support the future land use amendment. Just in summary, we're consistent with the policies and directives. The site is adjacent to roadways on three of the four sides, easy access to the Florida Turnpike. We have a signalized intersection at Acme and Boynton, and we're surrounded by non-residential development. Staff is recommending approval. We have a letter of support from Bark. I think you're going to hear from Cobra that they support the land use change. We are committed to continue working with Cobra and the residents of Bark as we develop the site plan, and Planning Commission unanimously approved the request. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, staff presentation.
Okay. Hello again. Jerry Lodge for the Planning Division. Before I begin with this presentation, I wanted to give one more overview of a recently adopted Commerce Future Land Use Designation, as we have a few new faces with us, just to give you an idea of what we're working with here. So the Commerce Flu was a county-initiated text amendment and was the result of several recent public hearings and workshops related to the Agricultural Reserve tier and the large number of applications that have been submitted requesting text and land use amendments for the industrial uses in the tier. The text amendment established the Commerce Flu and additional policies for new industrial requests within the Agricultural Reserve tier, and is intended to accommodate uses of a light industrial nature. Prior to the adoption of the Commerce Flu, staff consistently recommended denial of industrial requests in the tier, as there was no policy guidance in a comprehensive plan for such requests. This slide summarizes the Commerce policy requirements for light industrial requests in the tier, which requires that all new industrial requests be limited to the Commerce designation, in addition to meeting the adopted location criteria, which is summarized as requiring frontage on State Road 7, Boynton Beach Boulevard, or Atlantic Avenue, or having access to those roads through an adjacent commercial or industrial use. In addition, each CMR request must be reviewed alongside a concurrent zoning application and must meet minimum and maximum acreages and abide by preserve requirements. Preserves associated with CMR developments must be 40% of the total land area, over 16 acres, less right-of-way, and are also allowed to have water management tracks if contiguous to the site and applicant demonstrates that the tract provides enhanced environmental features and improved water quality. Okay? So this map shows the six Commerce requests that the Planning Division has received. These applications were submitted in May of last year, requesting the industrial future land use designation. However, after the adoption of Commerce and its related policies, the applicants amended their request from industrial to Commerce. Five of these requests have already been heard by the board, four of which were transmitted and will return to you for an adoption hearing. One of these, one of these requests was denied, and that's Boynton Land Commerce. This item is item four on the map that you see before you hear. And now on to the site-specific request for B.C. Commerce Center. The subject site is shown here outlined in red, and it's just over 47 acres. It's located at the northeast corner of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy Road. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use on 47. Oh, just said acreage. So they're changing from AGR to Commerce with underlying AGR. The concurrent zoning application is requesting to amend the zoning from AGR to MBPD in order to develop 645,000 square feet of warehouse with office, recreational, self-storage, and a proposed microbrewery. So here's the site again, shown in red. Since we just went over the corridor and surrounding future land uses on the last item, I won't go through that exercise another time. However, staff would like to highlight a couple of key observations regarding the site and its location. First is the proximity of the site to existing commercial and non-residential uses along the corridor, including the Canyon Town Center and Cobblestone Plaza. Secondly, that the site is located adjacent to the Florida Turnpike and Boynton Beach Boulevard interchange, which was identified in the Agricultural Reserve Master Plan as one of two locations in the tier appropriate for employment generating uses of a light industrial nature, which also included office uses. Directly south of the site are two amendments in process, including the previously discussed Logan Ranch Residential and Erickson Senior Living, requesting concrete living residential land use. This site was also the subject of two previously proposed text amendments initiations in 2020 and 2021, which proposed mixed-use projects for industrial future land uses with a residential component and no preserve requirements. Staff recommended denial as a request for major departures from agricultural reserve policies at the time, in addition to the absence of any industrial policies for the tier. The Planning Commission also recommended denial, and applicant ultimately withdrew these requests prior to the transmittal hearing. So staff's assessment concluded that the site is consistent with the Commerce policy requirements, including an onsite preserve area and is located along a major thoroughfare. The amendment is compatible as a request is in proximity to existing commercial and non-residential uses and is consistent with the development pattern of the corridor. Staff is, for these reasons, staff's recommending approval with conditions. The Planning Commission recommended approval with modifications to add one condition to limit the site to 0.35 FAR. The applicant is in agreement to these conditions, as stated at Planning Commission, and these details are included in your add-delete. Motion before you is to transmit. And our proposed conditions are to limit the development of the site based on trips generated by the proposed uses in order to comply with provisions of Policy 35D and to have the proposed land use amendment and concurrent zoning application heard at the same adoption hearing. And this now includes the proposed condition from the Planning Commission, which is to limit the site to 0.35 FAR. We have received some additional correspondence since we published our report. Those, that's also included in your add-delete, and that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none? Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor has a question.
Yes, thank you very much. The conversations that staff has had with my staff, as well as with Lisa Amara, is with regard to the microbrewery coming under Commerce. What has been the consensus of staff and, and of course, Ms. Amara under planning, for bringing in a microbrewery? These are important issues, right down there. Microbrewery under Commerce.
Yeah, so I know that that was discussed, I guess it was last week's BCC zoning hearing. So what zoning staff is currently working on is an update to the Unified Land Development Code and kind of redefining what a microbrewery is, because it was kind of a very broad-based definition. And when you think of a lot of, where a lot of the breweries are in Palm Beach County, like I live in Boynton Beach, and there are a cluster in an industrial park, up in Lake Park, there's one in an industrial park, so.
You've done your research on this issue.
And I've done site visits, because it's important to understand.
Somebody's got to go do this research.
What the uses are and how they function.
Have a map of microbreweries.
Right, yes, exactly.
Where Kevin lives.
So by, by having a clear definition of what a microbrewery is, and not, not a true restaurant, not something that's actually like a commercial use, that is moving forward to have that amendment. And, you know, from our perspective, that kind of a true brewery makes sense in an industrial-type area.
So then it would be allowed under the site plan for this area?
Yeah, so through zoning division, they're, they're working on those amendments, and they'll be back before the board.
Thank you, Kevin.
I don't know the exact date, but relatively soon.
The issue really, and not, to excuse the levity a bit, but the idea is that we would eventually like to bring in a restaurant kitchen added as a accessory use for a specific location, included in Commerce. And this goes along with the Ag Reserve's preface for having two areas in the Ag Reserve, one Atlantic and the Turnpike. All right, the big guy's coming up now, I guess. And as well as Boynton in the Turnpike for, for entertainment, mixed use, that sort of idea. So I'd like to make a point today to, to, for us to think about, adding a kitchen. And I'm thinking kitchen, I'm thinking farm-to-table kitchens, such as we have discussed at great length before, but adding that use under the Commerce clause, specifically, at least for this conversation, on those two specific locations, as noted in the, in the Ag Reserve Master Plan. So if that's understanding, because I like to bring it up now before we get into, when we get into the Ag Reserve workshop and the Commerce clause in greater detail. This is exactly what we, this is exactly what I am thinking of as, as an accessory to the, to the Commerce clause.
Yeah, and what we'll be sure to do is, because we have, I think, three of the blocks for the March workshop, focused on the Agricultural Reserve, so we'll have some slides that can go through some concepts for what you're, you're discussing at that workshop.
Excellent. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right. I think we're going to public comment now.
Okay. All righty, we have four cards that are non-speaking. Three of them are in support. One is opposed. And the three speaking cards that I have are Barbara Roth, Drew Martin, and Shai, I apologize in advance, Ozeri.
Hello again, Barbara Roth, representing Cobra. Again, on the north side of Boynton Beach Boulevard, right in Cobra's Ag Reserve area, Vice Mayor Sacks' district. Cobra supports the Commerce use. As a matter of fact, last August, when this body initiated that use, our president, Steve Wallace, spoke in behalf of Commerce. So we see this as a natural extension and a good So we see this as a natural extension and a good location. I was very pleased at Planning Commission earlier in the month when, right on the spot, the developer agreed to reduce the FAR, the ultimate square footage. I think that will serve everyone in the area well. Cobra includes those member communities referred to as BARC, and they are those canyon communities specifically who have asked for uses that will serve their residents. But make no mistake, this is for, you know, people from all over the larger Cobra area. We go from Military Trail to 441, from the Delray Line up to Lantana. So we expect these will be good uses, and we hope that as we work on this at workshops, you will, you know, work with us and listen to our residents, but we do support this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next?
Drew Martin, here on behalf of the Sierra Club. We support microbreweries, so I want to get that over right away, and we appreciate staff's detailed analysis of microbreweries and site visits. Sounds like a worthwhile endeavor. We're, you know, we're trying to look at the bigger picture, and we were not happy with the Commerce Amendment because it allows under sixteen acres, no preserve requirements, which we are concerned that that will result in division. Obviously, that's not the issue we're talking about right now. We think that all the things that this provides could all be done without going forward with these type of text amendments. We think that if warehouses were needed, if they supported agriculture, you could approve those, and it wouldn't be a problem. We're very concerned, though, with the loss of agriculture land, and I really think it's short-sighted, because I think this land's going to be worth a lot more money in the next couple of years as agricultural land, and there's a lot of benefits to agricultural land from a financial standpoint, because while they pay taxes, they don't use a lot of services. So agricultural land's extremely beneficial to the county, as well as the fact that it provides fruits and vegetables, which is a long-term business endeavor. Now warehouses may provide some employment, but agricultural land is most likely, particularly if you get into organic farming, which is a little more labor-intensive, you're going to produce a lot more jobs, and you're going to produce a lot more profitable business. Now, it's not right now, because right now, we still have fairly strong agricultural production around the United States, but that could change. So, you know, it's just a shame to see things like the Commerce opening so much land up. Now, from a cost standpoint, you're going to have seven thousand trips, and as opposed to a farm, which is probably, you know, I'm going to guess five trips a day, but I have no idea. But, you know, that's a big change. You're going to have to have a lot more infrastructure, a lot more roads, probably more sheriffs, probably more fire when people get into car accidents, so it's going to cost the county a lot of money. So I just hope when, you know, you're moving along, and I know that, you know, the train is moving forward, and, you know, you're jumping on that train, and I know you have a lot of enthusiasm, and I appreciate the enthusiasm the Commission has, that you do think about the alternatives of what this land could be doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and Commissioner Moreno, thank you for pronouncing my name properly. One of the rare instances where it happens. My name is Shai Ozari. I'm an attorney with Robert and Hart Cell PA, and I'm here on behalf of Sierra Club, Locks Hatchet Group, and A Thousand Friends of Florida. Our address is sixty-one Northeast First Street, Suite C, Pompano Beach, Florida. And I'm speaking in opposition to this amendment. It's important to remember the fundamentals of the Ag Reserve. The purpose of the Ag Reserve is to preserve unique farmland and wetlands, and in order to enhance agricultural activity, environmental and water resources in open space within the tier by limiting uses to agriculture, conservation, low-density residential development, and non-residential uses, which serve the needs of farmworkers and residents of the Ag Reserve. That's the purpose. And now the county has made some recent concessions and allowed for light industrial uses within the Ag Reserve through the Commerce Future Land Use Designation. However, these concessions still need to focus on the intent of the Ag Reserve with land use regulations that encourage agriculture, open space, while restricting high-intensity commercial and industrial uses, and ensuring that the development is appropriately located by compatible land uses. Now, that can't be done without a proper carrying capacity analysis of the Ag Reserve. And in the meantime, over a million square feet of industrial use has already been transmitted under the Commerce Future Land Use Designation without a proper analysis of the need or carrying capacity of the Ag Reserve. So before we go any further, the county should analyze what the actual issues are and the issues that have arisen with the Commerce Future Land Use Designation, the ambiguities, the lack of any cap for allowable Commerce or industrial uses in the Ag Reserve, and a Florida-area ratio akin to industrial and economic development centers that are not low-trip generating. And it would serve the public to at least postpone the review of this application until after we can have the Ag Reserve Workshop, which is on March twenty-eighth of this year, where these questions can be answered and the issue's addressed in more in-depth. Right now, this proposed amendment is a solution looking for a problem that hasn't been properly and specifically identified. In fact, FDOT has also warned that there was no transportation analysis included with the amendment to determine the amount of industrial development that can be sustained by the Ag Reserve, and advised that the county should evaluate the carrying capacity of the Ag Reserve to accommodate industrial development for consistency with Objective 1.5. This would involve establishing a cap on industrial acreage or square feet of development. Further, instead of transmitting now, we have the opportunity to first have the Ag Reserve Workshop on the twenty-eighth. If we're going to do this, let's do it right, let's have the discussion. Otherwise, we're rushing it, and it's going to create unintended consequences and more problems down the road. So on behalf of A Thousand Friends of Florida and the Sierra Club Locks Hatchet Group, we respectfully request that the Commission deny transmittal or at the very least postpone review until after the March twenty-eighth workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's it. It is back to the Board. Comments, motion?
I have a motion.
Vice Mayor, you recognized?
Thank you very much. Make a motion, but before I do, let me just comment for a few minutes, since this is, I think this is an important area, and as noted, in the nineteen-nineties, in the Master Plan of the, which created the Ag Reserve, it specifically stated that, and I direct the young lawyer who just came up to read the Master Plan from the nineteen-nineties, specifically specified two locations for mixed use. One is Atlantic in the Turnpike, and the other is Boynton Beach in the Turnpike. So we have before us today a sort of a mixed use. I think it's good. It's not, it's not high-density, but it will serve the needs of the residents of the Ag Reserve, and I think that it really fits within what was contemplated for, in the creation of the Ag Reserve. So with that, I would move to transmit the B.C. Commerce Center Amendment at this time, Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion by the Vice Mayor to transmit with the proposed conditions, and a second by Commissioner Moreno. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Right, moving along. We are now on to item, I believe if I've got this right, five A1.
Got it.
And that is going to be the Ag Reserve TIM amendments initiation.
Okay, and so we have now gone through all of the items for adoption and transmittal, and these last two are on the regular agenda for initiation, so.
Let's say regular agenda. That's okay. All right, we are ready.
Father Recard again.
We are ready for staff presentation.
Father Recard again, Kashid Mayudin with Planning Division. Ag Reserve TIM amendments initiation. Today, it is just an initiation for the modification to thoroughfare light-of-air identification map. Purpose of the initiation is to get some preliminary feedback from this Board, and should this Board initiate it, we will come back at a later date with staff recommendations and analysis. It does not indicate any approval at this time. The request is by the Engineering Department for eighty-foot right-of-way on four roadway segments, Happy Hollow Road from State Road 7 to Lyons Road, Half Mile Road from Atlantic Avenue to Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Road South, Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Road South from Lyons Road to Half Mile Road, and Smith Sunday from Atlantic to Happy Hollow Road. Those are the four roadway segments which are being requested. Here's the aerial. A little bit history of TIM changes in the Ag Reserve area. In year 2000, Ag Reserve Master Plan recommended to evaluate the removal of Linton Boulevard and/or Flavor Pick Road from the TIM and designate Lyons Road as a rural parkway. So in 2001, TIM map was revised to remove Linton Boulevard from State Road 7 to Jog Road, and Lyons Road was designated as a rural parkway from Atlantic Avenue to Boynton Beach Boulevard, consistent with the recommendations of the Ag Reserve Master Plan. In 2005, Atlantic Avenue was reduced from Hundred and Sixty to Hundred and Twenty-Six Feet for the segment from State Road 7 to Florida Turnpike as the widening beyond six lanes not planned in the future. And with this, I'll turn it over to David Ricks, County Engineer.
David Ricks, County Engineer, Mayor, members of the Board. From an engineering standpoint, looking at this area, there is some large spacing between the east and west roads. You can see in green, it's kind of hard to see that, but between two and a half to three miles between those spacing of the roads. And because of that, we established that potential, some roads for interconnectivity, for speed of fire service, and other things. And so what is being proposed is looking at three road connections, Happy Hollow, Smith Sunday, Half Mile Road, Hundred and Fifty-Eighth, about three-point-two miles, and basically the whole purpose to increase the connectivity along those segments, not to improve traffic, but to improve connectivity. So it's not traffic capacity, but increase connectivity and also to improve fire rescue service. And so looking at this whole road network in terms of level of service, looking at into the future in terms of 2040, I said in red, most of the roads will be above level Service D, and so the roads do have the existing capacity, but like I said earlier, the connectivity for residents in that area, if you need to go from point A to point B, if you have a true emergency. And so it's hard to read, but I'll give you the snapshot, but there are plenty, there's a lot of projects in that area. The DOT has a couple of projects for Atlantic Avenue that's scheduled for 2040, 2024, 2025 to expand Atlantic Avenue, which is critical. And then the county has several projects on Lyons Road, some are under construction, some are being planned in the next couple of years to improve the widening of Lyons and the connectivity on Lyons Road, and then also on Flavor Pick. We've got a couple of projects programmed for Flavor Pick, Flavor Pick, and that will increase the connectivity on State Road 7 to Lyons Road. So there's a lot of, you know, infrastructure in the plan or ongoing in that area from DOT to the county. I'll turn it back over to Kashid. Sorry.
So we had an extensive public outreach on this item as well. We had an informational meeting, and six people spoke in opposition to this initiation. We have a letter from sport from Fire Rescue, as it will give Fire Rescue additional travel options, reducing response times due to an additional access on State Road 7. Fire Rescue also has plans to put a south Ag Reserve station near Lyons Road and Linton Boulevard, and having Hundred and Fifty-Eighth go through would be beneficial to them. At Planning Commission, six members of the public spoke in opposition to Happy Hollow and two spoke, supporting Happy Hollow. One spoke in opposition to Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Road South. Our assessment is that amendment is necessary to improve connectivity, reduce emergency response from the fire rescue, provide alternative routes for general traffic, and reduce travel time and congestion. These will also alleviate some parallel segments of State Road 7 and Lyons and Atlantic Avenue. Staff is therefore recommending to initiate. Planning Commission recommended to initiate with modification, subject to relocation of Happy Hollow Road and Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Road South. We are requesting a motion to initiate at this time, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you recognized?
Thank you. I like, this is my district, I know this very, very well, and I want to thank staff and David Ricks for working with me on this area. I am not in favor of this at this time. State Road 7 is a FDOT road, as we know, and 441 is, well, and Atlantic Avenue is a FDOT. They need to step up to the plate and take care of these two state roads sooner than later. They have been in good faith, we've been talking about it, but they have said to me the other day that they're not even going to look at widening Atlantic Avenue, which stretches from 441 to the beach, crossing I-95 and the Turnpike. This is a major artery for Palm Beach County until late October of 2024 to look at it. So for us to cut across agricultural land and private property, which will happen if we do this, at this time is going to take the pressure off of FDOT, and I'm not up for that. We will probably need to have connectors in this area, but when our state partners will step up to the plate and work with us, we talk about collaboration, work with the county for connectivity, then this is something that we can put our money towards, and of course, to tell private landowners that we're going to be cutting across their private land. We are cutting across private residences, private land here. There's also in Hundred and Fifty-Eighth Street South, there is a wonderful Jewish, a sort of a community of mostly Jewish women who come together with their families to experience agricultural experience and meditation, many of whom names I would mention, and you would know them immediately, but I'm not going to at this time. So, yes, this is maybe a good project, but not now. Let's collaborate with our state partners. Have them work on 441 and have them work on Atlantic Avenue, and then we will together put our money and our land to work with them for greater connectivity. Until then, I would ask my colleagues here, and I have already spoken about this, so David is not, Mr. Ricks is not surprised by this, that we just put this off a little bit until FDOT is going to come to the table. They're already willing to come to the table, but let's have them come to the table, sit down with us, and let's collaborate so that we can all work together to develop this very beautiful area. So that would be my proposal at this time, Mayor, and that would be to, I know there's another light on, but that's my opinion, and I'll wait.
So are you making a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until we have a full commitment, collaboration. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until we have a full commitment, collaboration from the FDOT to expand these county roadways into private land.
Okay, so we have a motion from the vice mayor. Is there a second? We have a second from?
Mr. Mayor.
Isner Bennett.
Can we do public comments before we do the motion?
We can do that. We will, we've got a motion on the table, we're not going to move it, we'll just leave it.
I think it would be appropriate to do the public comments before the voting on the motion.
Would you mind withdrawing?
I have no objection.
Okay.
No objection.
Thank you, and sorry, Commissioner Barnett. All right. Commissioner Baxter, your light was lit, it's off now. Commissioner Marino, your light is off now, and we will go to public comment.
Thank you. We have several public comment cards, and some, most are speaking. We have three non-speaking comment cards, they are all opposed. So as for speaking cards, Camilla Samansky first, Denise Bednar, Brian Seymour, Mark Each take a podium. Who's going first?
Well, I think I'll go first, because I think I'm going to short circuit most of what we were going to do. So we're all aligned here. My name, for the record, Brian Seymour, on behalf of the applicant for the Mulva Hill property. And thank you very much, Vice Mayor, because what we're talking about here is actually critical to this. That where they put Happy Hollow specifically, we got a comment during our review that says connect to Happy Hollow, as it's going to be extended on the TIM. And we made a strong commitment to our neighbors, and I don't know if everybody remembers, we're not going to connect to Happy Hollow, we're not going to put trips on Happy Hollow, we're not going to use Happy Hollow, we're going to follow the comprehensive plan and only access via State Road seven. And so we appreciate that this could be continued. I mean, at this point, it could just not be initiated. I don't know that a continuance, you know, because I don't know how long it's going to take to work with DOT, well, I know how long it would take me to work with DOT, we'd be here, you know, well into my beard being gray, if I'm allowed to keep it. But ultimately, what we're asking specifically as to Happy Hollow and the folks that were just called are really about, it should not be an extension of Happy Hollow. If it ever does go forward, as the planning board recommended, it should be relocated. But if this gets either continued or simply denied, and then it can be brought back after collaboration with FDOT, that would be fine with us as well.
Thank you.
Sorry about jumping out of order. My name is Mark Perry, and represent some of the property owners along Happy Hollow. Initially, this first started with Bruce and Denise Bednar hired me, like that kind of kitty corner from the Mulva Hill site that was approved for development. And in the process initially, is the Bedners hired me to stop the project if I could. And then discussions with the developer themselves, they said, look, what are your problems? Well, our main problem was, we need a buffer, and we also didn't want access on the Happy Hollow. Well, they gave us the buffer, they also said they'd have direct access on that, onto four forty-one. So we actually ended up supporting the project. Now we have the county coming to us and saying, well, we'd like to put this thoroughfare this right away, and Happy Hollow now. We are not in favor of that, we do not want that. In the actual, and also then discussions with the planning commission, is that we had an open discussion about the viability of moving the Happy Hollow east-west, further north, on the piece that the county owns. I understand it's under lease with the Bowman family, but the idea is you're dealing with one property owner, rather than a bunch of property owners who have homes, front yards you're going to have to condemn, because that is a private road, that's not a county road. So in our discussions, understand is the approval was, with the planning commission, is the actual relocation of this east-west of Happy Hollow, north, at least what we were considering at the time. So please understand, we're adamantly opposed to anything going on to Happy Hollow, just the demand for the traffic wasn't created by this community. So now we've got to take this traffic from another location and bring it through our neighborhood? Not fair, not fair. So anyway, if this is extended out to another date, I'm a fool not to say that's okay, but on the other hand, though, I'd like to have it done at some point in time. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, Mr. Perry.
Yes.
So are you saying that your clients would be supportive if this was relocated, if the road was relocated to the north on county property?
That'd be fine, yes.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Yes, Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Mr. Perry, if you can come forward. You know, I think I've had conversation with Mr. Bednar, and I know at some point they would like to see, you know, an extension, so would he be okay with, you know, if we do extend it, he would be okay with that, probably?
The only thing that they would like to have happen is the Smith Sunday, to have that run along Smith Sunday, and then to improve that intersection, so you'd have a stoplight at that location, which I think would be the end result. But as far as then turning left onto Happy Hollow, going east-west, no. The other thing also that we came across when we were discussing with the planning commission is, if you were to take the extension north and put it on Palm Beach County property, run it west and align it with the Piro location, you'll have a traffic light there. And we've had fatalities at that location with Piro's plant, because you've got trucks coming in and out of there. So it makes much more sense to have it at that location, if it's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a quick point for the board. We did look, heard the planning commission recommendation, did a quick look, working with prime, that property is in lease through twenty fifty-some odd year. It was land that is in active farming, it's been leased by the county, it was purchased with bond money initially. The bond has fallen off, but it is in an active lease. There is no ability in the lease to contemplate and recalibrate that, so that's why you have the recommendation, the original recommendation on the Happy Hollow configuration, notwithstanding the action the board might want to take, but just to clear up on that point, that was not a recommendation from us.
Okay, Commissioner Baxter, and then Commissioner Marino.
Do we happen to have an aerial of where he's talking about would be a better location? Yeah, we're working on it. Here we go. Oh, is that on you? Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't look.
If you could just zoom in a hair, there you go.
That's?
Your mic.
This is county property. And this is Happy Hollow here.
Where's the camera? Can you show Happy Hollow again, please?
It's a roadway, it's that road, it's that road, right at the bottom.
Happy Hollow.
And the north side he was talking about is where the red line is?
North of the canal, yes.
Mayor? Please, go ahead.
Yep, okay, so Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
And either way, whether we go Happy Hollow or on that property, there still has to be a connection made to four forty-one going over the canal. So it doesn't matter if it's Happy Hollow or further north.
That's good.
Okay. Mr. Seymour, I saw you had your hand raised, and I, we normally don't do banter back and forth, but...
I wanted to clarify, based on something Mr. Rutter said, you do have that under lease, but every other piece of property you'd need to take for the widening of Happy Hollow is owned by a private party. So I'm not, this is not legal advice. You could condemn your leasehold interest if you wanted, just like you could condemn people's private property, or you can work with your landowner, or if it's not happening for years and years anyway, who knows? The point is, you have much more control over yours. That's why when Mark and I were talking, we were talking about your land. Yes, it's subject to a lease, but other than the school that's on the corner of Happy Hollow, there is no right-of-way. It would have to come from existing private properties. So that's why we think that would still be a better choice. Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner Marino.
If I may, there is one more additional property owner, it's the little...
Sorry, there's one.
Not that one on the corner, that one, yeah. So just wanted to clarify.
Correct, there was one, I apologize.
Thank you. All right, Vice Mayor Sax, you're recognized.
I'll get it in a minute. Mayor, is there any other public comment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then I'll reserve.
We have lots more cards. So Camilla, did you want to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. And then Denise Bednar.
Good afternoon. My name is Camilla Samansky, and my husband and I own the property at the corner of Happy Hollow and Smith Sunday Road. We bought that in nineteen eighty-five, because our property off Military Trail was taken. So now we use it for our green bean operation, which has been in business for over sixty years. And presently, we also graze some of our cattle, we have other cattle in another county in Florida. And so what you're proposing is to take, I only have five acres. You're proposing to take forty feet of that acreage off from the Happy Hollow side. Now if you continue down Smith Sunday Road and go to the other property we're discussing here, that would take a forty-foot section off my linear and the longest edge. So I'm kind of in a bind, because I don't like either one of those, but I definitely don't want you down Happy Hollow. It's privately owned, we went there with the idea that we wouldn't run into the same situation we ran into on Coconut Lane in Delray. And so I'm fearful that the ag reserve is being taken over a little tiny bit at a time by all these different things that are being proposed. And so definitely, we don't agree, and we would like this proposal turned down. And I really thank you for your time.
Thank you. No, no, no clapping, please.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time. My name's Denise Bednar, and we live at ninety-eight sixty-two Happy Hollow Road in the residential ag reserve. The Bednar family has farmed in Palm Beach County, as you probably all know, for sixty-five plus years, and have always been a big part of doing for our community. My husband Bruce bought this property when we were in high school, long time ago, knowing that someday we would move there and be close to the farm. So here we are, forty-two years, forty-two years later, and we still live on that property. We've raised our kids, and now our grandchildren get to experience the same thing. Now they want to come in and put a road right through our homestead. The people that really oppose this, or are for this, I'm sorry, they don't live there. They've never lived there. They run their businesses, so they don't really care if the road comes through their property at the front of it. So we've been there longer than most of the people out there, and we plan on leaving it someday to our kids and our grandchildren. And we call this a piece of heaven, so please preserve it for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Kelly Haverland, Drew Martin, Ted Anis, and Mike Atchison.
Hi. Keely Haverland, FNGLA, Palm Beach, again. We have a lot of nurseries under fire here. We're losing nurseries rapidly, and this would definitely railroad a few of them. And I just want to, you know, reiterate that we're in trouble in a lot of areas here, nurseries and landscapers, and there's a lot of development being approved. You need plants, need landscapers for those developments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Martin, for the SEER Club, and I just want to say how happy I am to be in agreement with Mark Perry, the Bedners, the farmers, and the landscapers, and support Commissioner, Vice Mayor Maria Sax. It is so good to be able to speak in unison, even momentarily, for supporting agriculture, for not taking away people's property rights, for not infringing on those people who have invested in the ag reserve. So this is an exciting moment. The SEER Club supports you all, and thank you for your work in the ag reserve, and for being farmers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike Atchison. I'm president-elect of the Palm Beach Chapter FNGLA, and I have a ten-acre nursery at nine six two five Happy Hollow Road. I wanted to start off by saying, on one of these slides, I saw that five hundred people were notified about this. I was not one of those five hundred people, and I am directly affected by this road going through our property. I'm a second-generation farmer, my family's been working on this property for over thirty years. I'm here today to oppose the right-of-way acquisition in the ag reserve. I understand the county's TIM amendments are a complex issue that require an understanding of relevant laws and regulations. However, we should not be punished over the development practices and improper traffic planning that the county has provided. Agriculture reserves are designated areas that are meant to be protected and preserved for agriculture use. Allowing the right-of-way through these lands would undermine the purpose of preserving these lands for agriculture. The Palm Beach Agriculture Reserve is a critical resource that must be protected and preserved from its environmental benefits to its economical and cultural significance. This reserve is an essential part of our community and must be saved for the future. We need to take action now to ensure that this precious resource is not lost to development or other threats. While the right-of-way acquisition in their agricultural reserve may seem like a straightforward issue, it's important to consider the many complex factors that are involved, including the protection of agricultural lands, the potential interference with farming operations, the economic harm to farmers, and the conflict with the land use regulations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. You're recognized.
Hi, Ted Anis, I live at, with my wife, at the corner of Happy Hollow and Smith Sunday. Right?
Yes.
So we're a double whammy as well, we're part of the Smith Sunday Road and also the Happy Hollow proposed widening. We've got a residential private road, as Mr. Perry has shared with you, and we'd like to preserve that, and are certainly an advocate for an option of potentially the road going north, as Vice Mayor Sax had indicated, or other options or relief that may be available. But we would, and as Ms. Bednar said, we're longtime residents, thirty years, thirty years there. Could get a pizza delivered in the last five, so growth is coming to us, and in a good way, and we respect it. But we'd also like to have some private property rights respected too, as possible. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have Judy Hill here, who actually wanted to speak until I looked at the card and it said "if" before eleven-thirty. So she is opposed. Next, Mike, did you put two cards in, Mike? Melissa McEwen and Matt Reinhold and Tyler Woolsey.
Good afternoon, Melissa McEwen, twelve-seventy Southeast Fourteenth Court Deerfield. I just wanted to come here to say, my family owns the parcel at four forty-one and Happy Hollow Road that is currently going through a commerce application. I just wanted to mention that the buyers had, you know, worked with the neighbors to understand the needs of that area and Happy Hollow Road, and worked to keep traffic from that commerce application off of Happy Hollow Road, and also buffer it with the very wide buffer and preserve area along Happy Hollow. So this proposal just kind of goes against us trying to work with the neighbors to do that. On the other side of things, I am, I do support connectivity. As the previous landowner of Delray Growers, which was at the corner of Smith Sunday and Atlantic, I can tell you that the widening of Atlantic has been on the ten-year plan for probably thirty years. But it is coming, you know, during, you know, the end of the days of owning at FDOT did, you know, come and finally approach us, you know, I hadn't been asking them for a long time when it was going to happen, but, you know, it is coming, and so it obviously is very needed, and would love to see that, you know, Smith Sunday and Atlantic aligned, and much safer to come out of Delray Marketplace for the people turning around, trying to go east. But anyway, the Happy Hollow situation, I would just say there's probably better roads or options out there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Matt Reinhold, Farm Bureau, Palm Beach Chapter. We oppose this. We are going to see further intrusion on our agricultural producers. If you want to put your head around it, it's like going into Publix and taking away half their store and tell them to still hit their targets in production and sales. And that's what you do when you lose farmland, you lose production. You're taking someone's business and livelihood away from them. So beyond the property value, you now have the loss of business value and the inventory and the production and the legacy. So we will fight you to never have this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tyler, all you put was your name, no address or anything like that on the card.
Sorry about that. I was filling out last minute. Apologies. Tyler Woolsey, Urban Design Studio. On behalf of the property owner of about 25 acres at the intersection of Half Mile Road and 158th, and I say intersection, they don't actually connect today, here to echo some of the same sentiments you've heard from the residents on Happy Hollow. 158th Road South is not the appropriate location for an east-west connection between Half Mile and Lions Road. Our client has been working over the last almost 10 years to put together a pristine botanical garden at this location. In recent months, we've been working with county zoning staff, trying to find a path to accomplishing that. And 158th Road South would bisect their property permanently and significantly impacting their ability to continue with that. Earlier this morning, our office did send over a letter to all the Commissioners via email. I have a copy of that letter here. I'd like to submit for the record. But just in summary, we oppose that east-west connection as being 158th South.
Excuse me, would you oppose, does your client oppose if it could be relocated so it doesn't bisect their property and could be?
No, we would be in support of the relocation, yes, sir. In our letter that I'll pass out, we actually proposed two potential alternatives that we've begun evaluating and we think are actually more efficient, more appropriate locations for that connection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor, we have no more cards.
All right. Okay, before we come back to the Vice Mayor for her motion, I just think in talking to staff now, in hearing everything that's been said, it seems like you have their support for connectivity, but the actual location. And I know when we did our review, you said, you know, these, this locations are not in stone. This is just more of a template. Maybe if you brought your template back without the street names on them and just sort of the area you wanted to address them to, it may be something that the community get behind and support. So, just a suggestion. Okay, Commissioner or Vice Mayor, you can, floor is yours.
Thank you. I would say something, but I have learned many years in court that if you think you're going to win, just shut up and make your motion. So I'm going to make my motion. I'm not going to speak. The motion is to deny the transmittal of the
Initiation.
Magic words. The initiation of the agricultural reserve thoroughfare identification map at this time.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor to deny. We have a second from Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Turn my microphone on. If we deny at this point in time, you have the ability to come back to us with other options, correct? Because I want that option on the table.
Right. And one thing I do want to point out, because this has been brought up in the past, when there's been a denial on a site-specific future land use map amendment, the, an application for the same requested change cannot come back for two years. That does not apply in this case. This is just initiation. So it could always come back, yes, even with the denying of the initiation today.
Because I think what you're hearing is that we are in favor of connectivity in this area. We're just not so much in favor of some of the particular roadways. Is that correct, Maria?
If you wish, I can talk. But, but I'm not going to talk. I think that enough has been said. We know what we want. We know we want FDOT to step up to the plate and then we will review it. This is not a surprise to engineering. We've been over this many times. So I'm not going to talk. The motion's on the table. It's been seconded and I would request a vote at this time.
Commissioner Baxter would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, would you agree that we don't want staff to bring back Happy Hollow as an option?
I don't want to put any commitments on it because, because a lot, I want to put, let me tell you something. Now you got me to talk. I want the Florida Department of Transportation, I want you to hear me, to come on out there and help us with 441 and Atlantic Avenue. Instead of the residents and taxpayers of Palm Beach County having to foot the bill to go through private land where people are living and to go through private businesses where people are making their living in order for us to wait for FDOT to finish what they should be finishing today. And I do not think that this idea of us having to bear the consequences of a lax attitude by FDOT on these two areas, 441 and Atlantic Avenue, could, you know, impose pain and also a loss of earnings to the people of Palm Beach County. And that is why, when we're ready to go forward, I'm sure that engineering and land and our planners will bring this forward in the best use possible for the residents of Palm Beach County. And that's it. So my motion stands. I have a second and we can bring it up at any time when we're all are ready. When that time is ripe, we'll do it the right way. Do it once, we do it the right way. Today's not the right time.
Right. Anything else?
No.
Seeing nothing else? All right, let's call the question. All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries seven to zero to deny. All right, we have another item. This will be 5B1. This is the Heritage Farms Transitional Overlay Text Initiation, not to be confused with the Heritage Farms Overlay.
First and last, right?
More or less, yeah.
All right, final item on the agenda, and we'll begin with the applicant's presentation and then Stephanie Gregory with Planning Division will provide the staff's presentation.
Good afternoon. Ken Toomuth, Urban Design Studio. Thank you for having me this late afternoon. So a couple items, housekeeping items first. In regards to the name of the Heritage Farms Transitional Overlay, that was my mistake. We shouldn't have called that. I'm going to call it Cypress and Yi from this point forward. It's very confusing. It was confusing with the Planning Commission, confusing with neighbors, confusing in the paper. So we'll just call it Yi and Cypress property from this point forward, if that's acceptable with the board. What is in front of you this afternoon is initiation. This is the first phase of a text amendment. And the board, and the responsibility here of the Board of County Commissioners is to say, is this a good idea? If this is a good idea, allow it to move forward. And then in May, we would actually submit the data and the analysis that go along with an actual application. At this time, all that's been submitted is the language that I'm going to show you. It's all that's been submitted, the data, the analysis, the traffic studies. All those items come in the process when we submit in May. We are in the beginning of a long process. It's an 18-month process. If you agree to move forward today, the actual approval, the final approval won't be till February of 2024. So a year from now, we've been in the process for about six months so far. So allow me to walk through a few slides. The subject site on the screen in front of you to the, is the Yi property in the Cypress Polo here on the left-hand side of 441. For a frame of reference, the turnpike's here. Here's Hypoluxo, of course. Here's Heritage Farms, as you had a large discussion about this morning. And the south part of the subject property is a trotting center overlay. You're going to hear me refer to that several times today. That is where you did a land use amendment recently. You transmitted an LR2 land use with an overlay to allow two dwellings per acre on that site. It comes back to, I believe, February 23rd for final adoption and a site plan approval. Immediately to the east of the site is Isabella, Oak Haven, and several other communities, Bellagio. I know several residents who are no longer in the audience live in Bellagio. So what is in front of you, as I stated a couple seconds ago, was initiation to allow the overlay to begin its process, to allow us to come in, to make a submittal, make an application with all the data and analysis associated with it. Concurrently, we would do a land use plan amendment. We would allow the change to LR2. And also, we would do the zoning as part of it also, so you see the full plan. So the request on the screen is to institute the Heritage Farms Transitional Overlay. The rest of the screen is the map series that required to be amended. So these are the requests that are in front of you, is to implement this overlay or initiate this overlay, initiate the change of the map series associated with it. There are three maps that are impacted, identified on the screen. And if you move forward today, we will submit in May for a full application of all the details and all the backup. So to kind of start this conversation, talking about the trotting center. The language on the screen is a trotting center overlay. Again, that's been transmitted and adopted. The next slide is the overlay, the Heritage Farms Transitional Overlay, or the Cypress and Yi property. The key, I'm not going to walk you through all this language. The language is almost exactly the same with the exception of a couple items. But I'm going to walk you through kind of the big tenants of it, because there are some great design things that occur and some good components that are part of this, a part of the overlay. First thing, the approval process. The approval, the overlay that we're requesting is part of the approval process. We have to do a land use amendment and a rezoning at the same time. That way, everybody knows at the end, in February 2024, what they're getting. And that's important because design is part of this process and that design comes from a couple steps down. Minimum acreage, and that's consistent with a trotting center. The minimum acreage, we are requesting a change in the minimum of acreage. Our subject site is 96.1 acres. We're requesting that the threshold be for our overlay be 95 acres. The next item on is minimum density of two dwelling units per acre. We are committing to that two dwelling units per acre, consistent with the trotting center. I want everyone to know, and I want to be very clear on the record, we're going to be coming in a lot less than two dwelling units per acre. Where right now, the design that we've been working through is around 1.6 dwelling units an acre. The next, the next item on this screen is the workforce housing density bonus not permitted. We are not going to be coming back to you to request TDRs. We're not requesting workforce housing density bonuses. Pulte is making a commitment on the record that there will be 10% workforce housing. Their proposal would be to do off-site workforce housing and they would prefer to, and they would also take off the in lieu of component of it, so they will build the units. Location, on special planning areas, yes, we have to modify the maps to match the special planning areas. The design features, which is the next item, the design features are transitional lot sizes. As part of this discussion, the transitional lot size is going from smaller lots on the east side to larger lots on the west side. The smaller lots on the east side would probably be a fifth of the acre. Going all the way to the west side, where currently what we've shown the neighborhood group is up to three acres. So we're doing a significant amount of transition. Over 20% of the lots will be greater than one-half acre. So that's part of the text and also part of this overlay. Expanded buffers. The buffers are expanded on the west side. We're proposing a 50-foot buffer adjacent to Heritage Farms. And then on the north side, we are also proposing, we've made a change. We've began meeting with the neighbors. We're going to go to 100-foot buffer along the north side, which is a significant concession when compared to the existing trotting center overlay, which we're asking, which has the 20-foot buffer. Design, excuse me, I apologize. Nated vegetation, we will certainly do native vegetation in all the landscaping buffers. Access, the access will be restricted to State Road 7. And then also urban services. There are urban services already on State Road 7. We will be using those urban services. And of course, they'll be kept internal to the community. So the big picture changes from, again, comparing the trotting center just for a second. The boundary has to change because of different areas. It's north of the trotting center. We're reducing the land area to 95 acres. We're actually increasing the buffer on the north side. So just compatibility, always a fun topic. Compatibility on the screen in front of you, you'll see the LR2 all the way on the east side of the site. This is LR2, meaning two dwelling units per acre. Eight, three, and then you have LR2 here, which is the trotting center. And then to the north is our subject property. We'll be requesting LR2 also. What you'll see from a density standpoint, on the east side of 441, very consistent density. On the west side, our proposal is to do transitional density, again, going from the smaller lots to the larger lots. And in the surrounding area, you know, there are 1 to 10-acre units here, 1 to 5 acres. These are .28-acre lots here, so it's a really diverse community. And we think that that transition from east to west is appropriate. This is the actual densities out there, the net density. You know, some of these projects have credits for golf courses and other items. The net density.
Ken, I'm going to interrupt for a second because the mayor said it was okay. When you point to that screen, we can't see it.
Oh, okay, so what?
We had to figure out a better way for when the applicant is doing their presentation.
If I may take a moment of liberty here, it would be a lot easier to have something right here and I can just point at that screen. Oh, that one way out there. I can't even see that screen.
But, and I guess we
Is there a red dot on it?
Okay, we, you know,
Oh, there it is, okay.
In the future, making it easier for the applicant and also for you all. Because you all turn and look at this screen and then when you do that, we can't hear you. We need to come up with a better way to do this.
I agree.
Thank you.
I will even, I'll put the computer right here if you want.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so now I'm off. Okay, so let's go back to the screen over here. I'm going to find the red dot. There it is. I'm going to move it over. Okay, so here, hopefully, can you guys actually see that? So here's the area, the transitional densities here, the two dwelling units per acre. Let me jump to the next slide, which shows the request for two dwelling units per acre. And so kind of the summary here of the request is, the summary of the request and kind of some of the reasons behind the request is to allow for the, to contribute to the unique character of Heritage Farms. This does allow for transitional density. It does answer the question about what this land is going to be in the future by having single-family homeownership on the property. We are creating this transitional density. It is expanding, expanded landscape buffers and also to the access for the services off of 441. Now, I would, just a few moments of deference here, I would request, we have had several meetings with some of the surrounding neighbors. There is not, as you heard this morning, not a property owner association associated with the property or homeowner association. We have met with some of the neighbors. We've had meetings, I think we're on our fourth or fifth meeting. We're continuing to work through that. We will continue to work with neighbors. I mean, I would characterize our meetings, started out a little rough. They might be warming up a bit, a little bit, but we're getting there through the process. Of course, they'll speak for themselves on where we are in the process, but we are continuing to work through that. This is just an initiation. We have till February of 2024 to come up with a solution for any neighborhood challenges that we may have. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have. I would request a few minutes to rebut after public comment. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Are you, okay, staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie Gregory with the Planning Division. So this request is to consider the initiation of a private text amendment for the parcels, commonly known as the Yi Cypress Polo properties. Sorry, I'm having a little technical difficulty. Okay. So for a brief overview on text initiation, all comprehensive plan, text and map series amendments require initiation by the board. The requests can be privately proposed or staff proposed. Initiation by the board authorizes staff to process the text amendment requests and also to accept an associated future land use or development order amendment application. So this particular text amendment request is site-specific for the 96-acre parcel located north of Trotting Center, shown outlined in red. So if the board does initiate, the applicant would then submit a future land use application in May from RR10, one unit per 10 acres, to low residential, two units per acre. The proposed text amendment request is very similar to the trotting center overlay, which you heard in September and November and will hear later in February. The intent is to revise policies in the rural tier to establish a transitional density option for up to two units per acre, which is a density not currently allowed in the tier. Development in the overlay would also be subject to additional criteria, including specified location boundaries, acreage requirements that are applicable to the subject site only. that are applicable to the subject site only. The concurrent site plan would be required to demonstrate access onto State Road 7 and provide a transition in lot size from the smallest located towards State Road 7 to the largest being located at the western property line. And then, would also require expanded buffers. Staff's assessment is that the proposed overlay is confined to the subject site only and provides a density increase mechanism alternative to a tier change. Staff supports the initiation to provide the opportunity for the board to consider and provide direction on how this amendment should proceed. However, it does not indicate staff support for the final developed policy language or the FLUA amendment. So, should the board initiate the proposed amendment, staff would return with a full analysis and staff recommendation to be heard at the planning commission and the board later this year. Earlier this month, the planning commission voted 6 to 0 to initiate the text amendment, and the motion for you today is to initiate.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none? All right.
We still have cards.
Okay, we have three non-speaking cards. Two are in support, one is opposed. And then, four speaking cards. Risa, Carolyn McKay, Drew Martin, Michelle Burns, Roland Yi.
Thank you, guys. So, a couple of things I want to say. In the interest of fairness, like they said earlier, I feel like you should postpone theirs as well, considering those properties are located within the Heritage Farms overlay. That only seems fair to me. These overlays allow the developer, from what I understand, not to have to pay for the land use change, which is supposed to be a much more expensive and timely process. These text amendment changes are a benefit to the developer, and I think that's something you guys should be looking at. No one wants this development within Heritage Farms. We had a 65%, 65% of the community said that they wanted this overlay, and we didn't get to move forward with it. So, I think that because these properties are located still within the, within the Heritage Farms boundaries, we should be tabling them as well. And then, you know, we've had three meetings with these guys, three. Trotting Center worked with us for a year plus. We're still probably talking to them about concessions and working together to make this cohesive with the community. They've put in a lot of extra things that will make this palatable to the community and, and make it so that it's compatible. You can't put high-density residential neighborhood next to people who like to keep pigs and horses. You have to make concessions that make this palatable for both sides. It's just about working with your neighbor. And we had a nice, long chat with Mr. Yi and Ms. McKay over lunch. We're not, no one here is, is, you know, hating each other. We all want to work together. We all want to live together. We all love this county. We just need to, to find a better way. And I don't think we're there. I think you need to table it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McKay?
Hi. Good afternoon. Carolyn McKay, again. Live and own Cypress Polo Club. And as I stated, in combination with the Yi property, we're a continuous contiguous mirror image of the Trotting Center. Close to 100 acres, 441 roach frontage. And I'm asking for your support and initiation of our own text amendment, as you did for the Trotting Center, to our southern border. Also, at this time, as we continue to work with the neighbors, I'm respectfully asking if you would direct staff to remove us from the Heritage Farm overlay at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Martin, followed by Michelle Burns and Roland Yi, you're the last card.
Drew Martin, once again, on behalf of the Sierra Club. I support what Risa said. And, you know, I actually did attend some of the meetings with Heritage Farms people because I have always been very concerned about Heritage Farms. When I first came to Palm Beach County, I was good friends with Rosa Durando. I still consider myself good friends with her, even though I haven't seen her in a while because of her health. But she really educated me about Heritage Farms. She said, "Look, we're different. We're rural. We're secluded. We're quiet. We have wildlife. We have deer." And she was really concerned. And this was like 15 years ago, and she was telling me, "You know, they're really doing a lot of stuff they shouldn't do." She said, "I hear pumps out there. They're pumping the water off the land. They're destroying the wetlands." Obviously, this wasn't everyone. But I think she was referring to the Trotting Center, but I'm not sure. So, I don't want to be accused of, you know, saying anything bad about them. But it was definitely those properties. And I believe her property backed up onto that. And she was very concerned. And she had people going out there all the time. Now, I like the fact there's deer out there. I like the fact that they have dark skies. And I've been out there, and I've, I've been at, at your house, which is beautiful. And I hope if you ever get a chance, you get to see her house. She has an absolutely beautiful house, a beautiful, you know, yard. And it's, it's very, you know, she has quiet. It's very quiet. She has the peacocks across the street. And I really just want to protect her way of life. That, that's my interest, and Risa says. And just, you know, allow someplace in Palm Beach County, and these people have invested. I mean, these are beautiful homes and a beautiful place. And they've, they've paid a lot of money to have this secluded life. And I want to protect that. And I think that's important for the taxpayers of Palm Beach County as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. It was a little embarrassing. But anyway, Michelle Burns, live in Heritage Farms Road. And at this time, I'm opposing the initiation of their overlay, only to give us a little bit more time to discuss more with the developers. And again, we had a very nice, short meeting with Mr. Yi and Ms. McKay to discuss what can be done to help both of us. And I think right now, it's just a little bit too rushed. And if it just could be postponed a little bit, so that we can have a little bit more time to work together and work something out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roland Yi, 7501 South State Road 7, Lake Worth. I don't want to necessarily just repeat everything that I, I said earlier today because I know it's been a long day, and I appreciate your time. See a lot of smiles. But I just do want to hit upon a couple of, I think, very pertinent points. And those points are that we are a farming operation. We've been in farming for 83 years. Of those 83 years, we've been in Palm Beach County for over 50 of those years. For over 50, for those 50 years, we've owned this property since 1984. That was 19 years before the rural tier was ever even established. So, we were not a part of the rural tier. We were placed in the rural tier. Unlike some of the other projects, we did not buy this on speculation. We purchased this to farm. And we, we, we did not buy this on speculation. We did not buy this on speculation. And, and our property is the mirror image pretty much identical to that of the Trotting Centers, which the board has initiated, initiated in the past. And all we are asking is for, to be fair and just in this situation. And to initiate the Yi Cypress Polo amendment, as you did, so we can continue the conversations with the neighbors that we have started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. There are no more cards. Okay. Non-speaking? Okay. All right. Comes back to the board. And Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I, I would like to just make the motion to approve, to initiate, excuse me.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Baxter to initiate and a second by Commissioner Bernard. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I second the, the motion. You know, I, I know that we decided to postpone the, the Heritage Farms overlay district till, I think, August 30th. And, you know, as Mr. Tuma mentioned, that, you know, this is an 18-month process, and you've been working on it for six months. You've got 12 more months. So, it's really important for you to work with the Heritage Farms Neighborhood Association. I know the Trotting Center worked really hard diligently with them. So, I'm hoping that you're able to work with them. So, in that way, eventually, you can get their support. So, in that way, it's a project that everybody can live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. And just, just for clarification, can you tell us the difference between initiation and transmittal?
Sure. So, this is just the first step. So, the board is saying, yes, you can proceed with this text amendment. And then, the applicant would submit their future land use application in May. That would then lead to a fall planning commission. And then, it would be before the board for transmittal in November. So, as mentioned, it's a long process.
So, at this time, we're not approving the project. I just want to, I want to get it out.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
We're not approving the project. We're approving more investigation and the concept into this project. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm in favor.
Okay. Commissioners, Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Is this, since we denied it this morning, the overlay, well, but it, actually, we postponed it. This will go in concert with the, because I think we need more discussion with the, with the residents and what's going on there. Will this sort of be in tandem with that, with that postponement this morning?
Yeah. So, the timing for this one's a little bit behind. So, yeah.
Good, good, good.
So, you know, those, that adoption hearing is not right for the county overlay. But yeah, you can kind of see it's tracking behind that county overlay.
I prefer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we call the question, I just, I think the comments made by Ms. McKay and Ms. Burns, Mrs. Burns, are not lost on me regarding the timing. But as you can see, staff has, has identified that this, that you guys are actually ahead. This will end up, you'll be, end up being ahead of that. It also doesn't, the irony of the applicant not wanting to support the overlay for the rest of the community, but for their own property was, is also, the irony does not, does not miss, I don't miss that. So, I do have concerns about the 95 acres, that, that it end up to hopefully be 100 acres when it comes back and for transmittal. And I also, and I know Mr. Tuma, as I take you at your word, that you're going to be working hard with the Heritage Farms folks. And so, I will, I will support the initiation today. And with that, if anybody else has anything else?
Last one.
Okay. All right. With that, all those in favor? Here, wait. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries 7 to 0. All right. I think that was our last item.
Yes.
Any more add-ons somebody would like to put on here?
None from staff.
All right. So, now I need to go around the table. And let me get my sheet. All right. Who's next? Who's first?
Assistant County Attorney.
The Assistant County Attorney. Do you have any comments, sir?
I do not.
Planning Director.
Just to thank everyone for another full day and your time.
Well, you're very welcome.
Where's that brewer?
Okay. Zoning Director, we don't have. Executive Director. No comments. Assistant County Administrator.
No comments.
Okay. We will start with our Commissioners, and we'll start to my left. Commissioner Barnett? No comments? No comments? Commissioner Marino?
Staff, thank you. It's been a long day. It's been a long two days. And just a comment that we know how hard you work to bring this stuff to us. And we take everything that you, we read it. We appreciate it. Some clarification every once in a while, like on the map with the North Lake Tim, where you still showed eight lanes east of Beeline. I think as much as you can get the most accurate information to us, that is really important. And, and again, and also with the Tim for Happy Hollow and whatnot. I, I'm very visual. So, when I can, when you put them up there, I really see what you're saying. And we need a lot of specificity. So, I do appreciate everything you've done, but going forward in the future. And then, let's get media working on all this stuff, too. Thank you.
All right. We'll jump over to Commissioner Baxter.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It doesn't go missed how much hard work you guys put into this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I want to know where those distilleries are. It's got to be 5 o'clock.
We get a spreadsheet with addresses and a map.
You can put that map over on that side, though. No, I, what I do want to remind my colleagues is that this Friday at 11:30 at the Civic Center, South County Civic Center, we have Major General Hartzell, United States Marine Corps. We're going to find out why he is called the Hammer. He served in Afghanistan and Iraq, and he is the head of all of Florida's veterans throughout the state of Florida. He will be here Friday at 11:30. It's really not just to meet the Hammer, but it is to find out what benefits our veterans can claim and should claim. And so, I invite everybody here, anyone who comes, any commissioner, will have access to the microphone and to honor any veterans or spouses of veterans in your district, and to say anything that you wish to honor Florida's 1.5 million veterans. So, I invite you all, I look forward, and thank you.
Where's it at?
Oh, to South County. What did I do with that? It's got, South County Civic Center, South County Civic Center. And 11:30, we have food. And 11:30 at South County Civic Center this Friday. I look forward to seeing it. And yes.
All right. Well, I just, I want to thank my colleagues. I, we've had, so far, a long couple of days. And you're all dismissed for the rest of the week, at least from me. So, there's your benefit. I want to thank our staff. You all always do an amazing job, the work that you do. I want to thank the public. We had a large public participation today, which is very helpful. And we do encourage the public to join us and to share their thoughts and concerns over what's being proposed. And with that, I don't see anything else that needs to be said. So, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great day.